The floor is open for nominations.
Nominate Bridgette Ribbit.
Bridgette Ribbit has been nominated. Is there a second?
No, I have no second.
That's our second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk to cast one ballot for Bridgette Hargan-Ribbit as moderator for one year. Second article is to receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. Gavin, did you want to speak to the...
Good morning and thank you for coming. We wanted to talk about, I think there's been some confusion or wonder how this town clerk position administrator has been changed. I think it's two, this would be three years ago, we made a change, town clerk slash treasurer and administrator. The spots were separated, the salary was separated into three different groups at that time. Some people apparently, we brought this up at town meeting when we were doing. We did it after the town of Coventry, got in so much trouble there. They had a new tack, it's a new town clerk. They got into, between the select board and the town clerk treasurer, they got into quite a hassle. She locked them out of the office of all knowledge what was going on. When they got done with the three-year term, she was elected out, they were $200,000 in the hole. So this, that's when we, we talked of this before, I used to say it, but it wasn't formally separated. So now Jonathan Uvere is our new town administrator. And we're electing a town clerk today that will no longer be an assistant town clerk. It will be a town clerk and then some clerical. So this will be separate. John's office is in what used to be the selectman's room. Amanda's running for the, getting hold orders today. Treasurer. And so there'll be different people looking at warrants. They have to be signed, it just can't be one person in charge of all of this. I believe there was a town recently, in the middle of the state, where they had a town, they had a manager, and the person working for them got an email from the manager saying we need to send X number of dollars out. And another person in the opposite, you need to get that grant by the select board before you do this, the person just decided to do it. I think it was two-time checks, it's sending money out, and it was a fraud scam. They were out $200,000 and something thousand. And I believe insurance paid about half of it when they got done. So it's kind of a checks and balance. And with the changes going on now, this is why we decided to make sure that this actually was done formally. It has been done, it was approved, it's town, I think it's three years ago at town meeting. We brought it up and said what we were doing, and now with the change going on, we've got separate people, different administration parts. It's actually less money than we were paying. I think it is $15,000 less, we're all done with this dollar and cents wise, but we've worked with Amanda to help do a changeover that will help finish training Jonathan, and help anything in, like may say whoever gets to be town clerk, a call of honor, to get some answers if we can't yet find out easily. To also work with the select board on finishing out some of these grants, we've got quite a lot of road grants out. If we miss dates or don't complete those, we could lose quite a bit of money. So we're trying to do a transition, we knew the whole thing was changing when she left. We tried to work something out that we thought would work out best for the town. So I hope that answers some of the questions people had of what was, how things were now. So it's basically, there's a town clerk, that is just a town clerk duties, there's no administration, there's no town help, grants, working with, oh, when we get somebody in to do surveys, to work before you do a project on the road, you have to have all this stuff in place with the state. That'll be done through Jonathan, he'll be administering, he'll be doing the HR, the warrants, working with warrants to us, come to the select board meetings, meet with the library, group, firemen, those kinds of things. So it'll be distinct separation, the town clerk will be records, taxes, collection of taxes, elections, all those kinds of things. So I, so if something more I could answer, I'll try to answer for you, we'll try. I just thought, we, we just thought it'd be wise if we get up and gave you, so you had information, so you knew what the heck was truly going on. There's no questions, I'll send them get out of the way.
Is there any other discussion on any of the reports contained in the annual town report? Okay. Article three, to elect from the layup voters of said town the following officers. One town clerk for a term of three years by ballot. Floor is open for nominations. Linda Hodeck is nominated by, was it you, Charlie? And Charlie second. Are there any nominations, other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Linda Hodeck as town clerk for a term of three years. Congratulations Linda. Floor is now open for nominations for one treasurer for a term of three years by ballot. Amanda Forbes has been nominated by Tom Hargan, seconded by Charlie Thomas. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk to cast one ballot for Amanda Forbes as treasurer for a term of three years. Congratulations Amanda. Floor is now open for nominations for one select person for a term of three years by ballot. Gavin Ryan has been nominated. And seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Gavin Ryan, a select person for a term of three years. Congratulations Gavin. Floor is now open for one select person for a term of two years by ballot. David Persons has been nominated. And seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for David Person as select person for a term of two years. Congratulations Gavin. And the floor is now open for nominations for one auditor for a term of three years by ballot. Jeanie Persons has been nominated. And seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Jeanie Persons as auditor for a term of three years. Congratulations Jeanie. Floor is now open for one Lister for a term of three years by ballot. Linda Hodeck has been nominated. And seconded. Are there any other nominations for Lister? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Linda Hodeck as Lister for a term of three years. The floor is now open for one library trustee, nominations for one library trustee for a term of three years. Laura Fullwiler has been nominated. And seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Congratulations Laura as a library trustee for a term of three years. Floor is now open for Article three H, which is nominations for a library trustee for a term of two years. Christina Boluk has been nominated. And seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Congratulations Christina to a term of two years as library trustee. Floor is now open for nominations for a first constable for a term of one year. David Persons has been nominated. And seconded. And the nomination was declined. Floor is still open for nominations for a first constable. Dick Hargan has been nominated. And seconded. Are there any other nominations for first constable? He's withdrawn his name, okay? So the floor is still open. For nominations for the first constable. If there's no nominations. If there's no nominations for the first constable, then the select board has to fill the opening. I'm sorry Damian. Dave, James, and seconded. Are there any other nominations for first constable? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Congratulations James to a term of one year as our first constable. Floor is now open for a grand juror for a term of one year. I didn't hear you. Kevin Mosher has been nominated. And then seconded. Who nominated, I'm sorry. J.D. Carville. And was seconded by Jasmine. Are there any other nominations for great juror? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Floor recognizes Mary Scheinerfer. Charles Thomas has been nominated for a grand juror for a term of one year. And seconded, who's seconded? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, so how do you want to vote for this? Call for a division of the house, I just need seven voters to agree for paper ballot. Raise your hand if you agree to do my paper ballot. Okay, there's plenty who can do that, okay. The request has been made for both candidates to introduce themselves to us. So Kevin, why don't you go first, you were nominated first. Yes, please do.
Good morning everyone. Hello. Good morning. My name is Kevin, I'm a resident in Fairfield for the last six months. Just to let you know that I served this country honorably for eight years, I was in infantry, I'm a combat veteran, and currently continue to serve this country as a employee of CIS Immigration. I have a degree in criminal justice, I've always been interested in law, and I would like to thank my mother-in-law for getting me out here this morning. I hope to have a vote.
He sounds pretty awesome, so I've got a drawing on my hand.
I think that means, drawing the drawing is name, I think that means we can forego the paper ballot. Is that right? Congratulations Kevin, to a term of one year. And the floor is now open for nominations for a town agent for a term of one year. Vanessa Goodtow has been nominated. And seconded by James. Are there any other nominations for town agent? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we congratulate Vanessa as our town agent for a term of one year. Yes, Jean has a couple remarks about...
So we've made it through most of our heavily contested elections. I did want to take a minute to thank Norm and Eric for his years of service on the select board. Norm, always, Norm was a very good man to have around, he's good with construction, he's pretty level-headed, even though some of the people don't think so. And Amanda Forbes is no longer going to be with us, but she served us very well as town clerk and treasurer, she obviously knew us as treasurer. I'd like to just, if we could stand up and thank both of these people.
Thank you Jean. Okay, Article four. Shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? I would entertain a motion. Jasmine made the motion, is there a second? Seconded by Damian Boonhauer. Motion on table, shall the property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? Floor is open for discussion. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of property taxes being due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it. Motion carried that property taxes will be due and payable on the first Friday of the month of November. Article five, shall the voters approve the 2020 total general fund expenditures of $1,496,393, of which $979,173 shall be raised by taxes and $517,220 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $1,427,107, of which $948,967 were raised by taxes and $478,140 by non-tax revenues. I would entertain a motion. We need to get it on the floor for discussion before we can make any amendments to it. Toby moved, made the motion for the article, is there a second? Seconded by Jasmine. Floor is open for discussion about the 2020 total general fund expenditures of $1,496,393, of which $979,173 shall be raised by taxes and $517,220 by non-tax revenues. Floor is open for discussion. Yes. Can we, I need to get a second before we can have discussion, but that's okay, we'll get there. Seconded by, your name please? Donna Barry. Thank you, so open for discussion on the amendment. Thank you. Other discussion on the amendment? Thank you, Charlie's going to speak to it.
Good morning. Good job Mr. Mosher, excellent, excellent resume, thank you. I'm just a truck driver. So, three years ago, the town of Fairfield Select Board decided to participate in a resident discount program with the St. Albans Recreation Department. What that means is we, as residents of the town of Fairfield, would receive the same discount in programming that the residents of St. Albans receive. It works out to be between, depending on the program, anywhere from 25 to 32% in, depending in which program you participate in. Three years ago, the town of Fairfield's recreation budget was $5,700. We gave the town of St. Albans $3,000 of our $5,700 budget to participate in the programming. The following year, the town of Fairfield's budget increased from $5,700 to $6,000, a $300 increase. St. Albans came back with an increase from $3,000 to $4,500, which left the town of Fairfield $1,500 for programming for all of our 2,000 residents. This last year, in preparation of the increase from St. Albans, we raised our budget from $6,000 to $10,000. Outback, you can see, we spent a significant amount of money outback renovating, adding ball fields, et cetera. St. Albans came back with, from $4,500 to $7,282. And we were told next year it would increase to $9,982, leaving the town of Fairfield $18 for our recreation budget. At our last recreation meeting, in a unanimous decision, the town of Fairfield decided to pull out of programming. We did not find it feasible to continue at that type of increase. So again, unanimously, we pulled out of that program and have a lot of ideas and aspirations to spend that money here in town to benefit the taxpayers who are contributing to our own recreation budget.
Thank you Charlie. Floor recognizes Jess, got up.
That's why I was late this morning, I was actually doing this before I came. We had 79 individual families participate in 426 programs. Melissa, what was that number? We have 676 families in Fairfield, and only 79 participated in the program. That, we do not know the overall savings, we do not know that. I'd have to look, I would have to look into that. I mean, it's, it's every, almost everything that St. Albans Recreation offers, the town of Fairfield residents would receive a discount on it.
Chair recognizes...
If, when you participated in the program, when you gave them your address, it would give you the discount automatically. And actually, due to that, there are residents of the town of Bakersfield who are re, oh sorry.
Her address is second, is yours Fairfield or Sheldon?
No, it's Fairfield, no Google doesn't recognize it.
If you gave them an address of Fairfield, you would have received the discount, it comes off automatically. And, and as I was saying, there are actually residents of the town of Sheldon and the town of Bakersfield who received the discount from Fairfield even though they don't pay into our tax base, based just on where their address is.
Chair recognizes Damian Boonhauer. Chair recognizes Trang Jeros. Could you wait and use the microphone Jen, so everyone can hear you, please?
So I appreciate the motion on the floor right now, but it seems that we could utilize our money better by providing scholarships to you, so we could still meet the needs of 79 families, because it's usually about the $30 dollar drop, depending on what the program is. But if we could probably set up a scholarship fund for families to be able to utilize their services, sports services, services in St. Albans, and still use only fraction. services, the sports services in St. Albans, and still use only a fraction of the $7,000, or potentially, due to being $5,000. So, we could meet those needs, but still save money if we like our recreation.
Other discussion on the amendment to increase by $7,500 for the residence discount with St. Albans Rec Department? Kristen? Microphone's coming.
Well, dollar to dollar, we don't charge for our programming, so we're ahead right there. And that's something that, and I think we can get those numbers in what we offered last year. We offer pre-K through four basketball programming, pre-K through four soccer programming. We held, so far, we've had two holiday parties. We started an annual run for chat. We have talked briefly with Joanna and the Pond Committee about offering kayak lessons and whatnot. We obviously have to look into the cost of everything. I can get the participation numbers for you on our end. It's, uh, well, the question that needs to be asked, that I'm not sure we have answers, is how many of those 79 families actually participated in the programming only because they were receiving the discount? As Ms. Berry here stated, she didn't even know she was receiving it, yet she still participated. Unfortunately, the board, the recreation committee, as we care about the 79 families, but we care about all 676 families in the Town of Fairfield. It is, we, it was, we agonized for hours over pulling out of this programming, but we really want to offer more programming here in town. And unfortunately, as everyone is aware, everything costs money. And if we're giving all of our money to the St. Albans Rec Department, which is awesome, yes, they have swimming pools. If you want to make an amendment to the budget, we can probably put one in too. It's just, we, we're doing what we can with what we have, we are doing the best we can. The Rec Committee was dormant for 54 months. We've only been an active committee for a year and a half, and we've already held numerous events, free programming. Just, I feel like, you know, we can do better with the money spent here in town than we can somewhere else.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Chair recognizes woman back on the bleachers, your name, please? Rebecca. Any other, anyone else want to speak to the amendment? Yes, you can speak again. It's your last time, though.
For another microphone, we're arguing that the Rec Program here should take the back seats to St. Albans, and we're not asking that that money be allocated. Actually, I want to do this, so saying, so wherever the piece with $10,000 budget they have, we still maintain our access to programs, and we don't have the facilities or the necessary grounds to utilize. I can't make everyone utilize that. 79 families, some families didn't even know the town existed, or don't even know to look what offerings are there. It is immense. I mean, anything from yoga classes, yoga, swim lessons in the summer, swim team, playing lacrosse. If you want to have a birthday party at St. Albans, all those things are encompassed in this discount. I mean, I know my family saves hundreds of dollars because of this. I mean, personal, if you need anybody here, if you want young kids, young people, these are programs that we can operate as now, for people who move to our community, which they are, as our school members represent. That is my last word. Again, I am not questioning what our Rec Department does, or what we can do, but I appreciate that we utilize those programs too. This is far beyond what we have access to based on our budget.
Any other discussion by anyone else?
So, to be clear, you'll still have access, you just will not have the discount. They're still going to allow you to use their program. They'll be happy to have you.
Anyone else want to make, have discussion on the amendment? Are we ready for the question on the amendment? Okay. All in favor of increasing the 2020 total general fund expenditures by $7,500 to participate in the residence discount with the St. Albans Rec Department, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The noes appear to have it. The noes have it. The amendment was not accepted. Is there other discussion? So now we're back to the original article. Is there other discussion on the 2020 general fund expenditures? Yes. We, you have to deal with the amendment on the floor. So, floor is open for the original article to discuss the 2020 total general fund expenditures of $1,496,393, of which $979,173 shall be raised by taxes and $517,220 by non-tax revenues. Any discussions, comments? Are you ready for the question? All right. All in favor of the 2020 total general fund expenditures of $1,496,393, of which $979,173 shall be raised by taxes and $517,220 by non-tax revenues, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article six, shall the voters approve 2020 expenditures of $148,040 for the Bent North Rip Memorial Library, $112,600 of which shall be raised by taxes and $35,440 by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were $144,561 for the Bent North Rip Memorial Library, $108,271 of which was raised by taxes and $36,290 by non-tax revenues. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Joanna Jeros, seconded by Mary Schreindorfer. Floor is open for discussion. Chair recognizes Laura Fullwiler.
Charlie, you're a hard act of power. I hope you all have received two pieces of paper when you entered. One was all the, our library in numbers prepared by Sarah, and the other one is a history of the endowment that we received. First of all, I'd like to thank the incredible board of trustees I work with at the library, Laura Bellstrom, Peter Burns, Christina Moll, and Samantha Thomas. Also, I'd like to thank Sarah. Anyone who has come into our library knows how warm and welcoming it is to walk in there. She also, we have a library table here, and Sarah was the person who spearheaded this year the strategic planning committee for our library, to make sure that the programs we offer, the things that happen at the library, are things that you have said you wanted. So, it's a real testament to the fact that that's research-based programming, which we really believe in. Also, thanks to Lenny and Sarah, who got her Ramon certification this year. So, let me just say, yes. If you could just look at the second sheet you got, about how the Northwood Sisters Endowment has benefited Fairfield. I want to thank Bridget Fettibit for doing all the work. She went back through 30 years of town reports. It's a lot of research. With the help of Amanda, who verified things, provided different documents to make sure that they were dealing with real numbers. And I would just like to call your attention to the fact that we're the recipients of this amazing endowment. Just an amazing endowment. And it was foresight on the side of, on the part of the Northwood Sisters to leave this money for our community, for the future, for your kids, for your grandkids, and into the future. So, Bridget did this. She went back 30 years, she collected the information, and has put it on the sheet here. The first side is all the numbers, the summary of the endowment. And the other side speaks to the library's investment policy, the library's financial obligations, and how we are responsible for that endowment. The summary of this, if you think about it, is that overall, over the years that the sisters died and had their estates settled and money was left to us, was $1.6 million. And if you look here, we have spent almost $1.6 million, a combination of operating expenses and almost a million dollars on building themselves. And guess why? This was, last week, we still had almost $1.6 million. I'm not going to promise that this morning. But it's also a testament to the fact that we have been prudent and that we've had very, very good financial counsel. So, anyway, we also, we also hope that in response to questions in the last couple years about that endowment, what about it, you know, how do we spend it, and what has it done for our community? We hope that this answers those questions, and we hope it also continues to win your support for Amazing Library. Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes. I'm sorry. How many families use the library?
Melissa, it's on the sheet. What?
Highlight it.
Okay. 16,500 library visits.
Other discussion? Thank you. Other discussion, comments on the article at hand with the library, 2020 expenditures? Are we ready for the question? All right. All in favor of approving 2020 expenditures of $148,040 for the Bent North Rip Memorial Library, $112,600 of which shall be raised by taxes, and $35,440 by non-tax revenues, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article seven, shall the voters approve $92,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department, set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Volunteer, Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2020, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors? Previous year was $92,225. I would entertain a motion. So moved by Charlie Thomas, is there a second? Second by John, yes, John Gordon. Floor is open for discussion. Ready for the question? All right. All in favor of approving $92,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department, set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2020, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article eight, shall the voters approve $15,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association? Previous year was $15,000. I would entertain a motion. Mary Schreindorfer is making the motion, is there a second? Joanna Jeros, second. Floor is open for discussion. Chair recognizes Jane Williams.
Yes, I would like to amend that from $15,000 to this year $18,000. It has been $15,000 for a number of years, and of course, as everything else, as we know, expenses have gone up, and also...
Jane, let's get a second to the amendment, and then we can have the discussion. Yep, is there a second? Jasmine will second. Okay, Jane, since you made the amendment, you can have the first, the floor first to discuss.
I'm hard to get rid of. So, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that people here are aware of is all of the things that the community center does that we need your money for. In reality, most of, most of the center is run by volunteers. We have 42 regular volunteers at the center, put in over 2,090 hours of community service. Some of the things that the community center does, it is one of Fairfield's greatest treasures. If you look on page 94, if you're all interested in reading this now or later, it tells you all about all of the wonderful things that are being done there. One of the things, of course, is the food shelf, which helps to supply food to many people in the area. We also have a community meal, which brings people together from our community, especially seniors, but everyone is invited. Also, we donate Thanksgiving baskets with the health of the Fairfield School, thank you, students, and many, many donations and volunteers. We also have numerous youth programs, including... We also have numerous youth programs, including Kids in the Kitchen, which is very, very popular. It's an after-school program. We have April Vacation Camp, and in the summer, we have Black Creek Adventure Camp. All of these are very well attended. They supply places for our children to go after school to do something meaningful. So all of these things are what makes, one of the things that makes our community so wonderful is our wonderful community center. So with that being said, I hope that we are able to spare a few more thousand dollars to the community center to help pay for all the wonderful things that are being done there. Thank you.
Is there other discussion? Yep, chair recognizes Michelle Visser.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Jane, that was really well done and covered lots of things. But now just a real quick push for some of the things that are happening soon. Sat Run Boogie this Saturday night at the Abbey with the Nogiri Project. Get your dancing shoes on and come on out. It's a fundraiser for the community center, a really important one. We are now offering soup and sandwich, soon to be soup and salad, as the weather changes on every Thursday at the community center. This is a luncheon meal, served from 11:30 to 1:00 by donation only. So if you're having a tough week, just come in and eat. If you have a few bucks to leave, again, this is all volunteers running this, and we have a fabulous bunch of people creating food and serving food, and don't miss it. And then, for St. Patty's Day, we are serving a traditional corned beef cabbage meal for the community meal at noon. But we're also going to prepare a whole lunch to go. So if anyone is busy working, wants corned beef cabbage, doesn't want to deal with all the work, Candy doesn't tell us, I mean, make it up, great for you. Call in or email when you're ordered by the 16th. Pick it up from 4:30 to 6:00 on St. Patrick's Day night, which is a Tuesday. So again, thank you all, and there are so many people in this room who started this community center almost 40 years ago. We have an excellent reputation in the state for doing things for our community. I want to thank everyone that served on the Lord, that's volunteered, that's donated money to the Meeting House and to the community center. And don't forget, go to Meeting House, go to their amazing lineup of 12 concerts starting in May. And thank you all so much.
Okay, discussion right now is about the amendment to increase the appropriation from 15 to 18,000. Are there other comments or discussion on the amendment? Chair recognizes, I'm sorry.
Jean Hopkins.
Jean Hopkins.
I'm Jean Hopkins. I was on the board of directors of the community center for 10 years, and I support all of its efforts. And I want everyone to understand that the community center pays for all of its lights, all of its insurance, and all of its upkeep, the cleaning of the facility, and the support staff that are there part-time. It is a vital asset to our community for people that have needs, for food insecurity, to allow people to come out and socialize, to build a community that has so many assets to it. And I think we just need to understand all the expenditures that this money will go to supporting the community center. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Are we ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor of increasing from, by $3,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association? Please indicate by saying aye. All opposed to the increase of $3,000? Please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The amendment carry. So now we need to have, or can have some discussion on the amendment, amended article of the voters approving $18,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association. Is there other discussion on the amended article? Chair recognizes Michelle Visser.
I was just asked about how we raise money. And the donations that we get from our cabinet of candy, we bring in $5,000 to $7,000. And then comes from all of you, the people who send in donations. We receive donations from the churches for the food shelf. We fundraised due to the Gitchell Valley, which only good year, it raised $8,000, and it usually raises $5,000 to $8,000. It's a huge fundraiser, of course. Sat Run Boogie, if all goes well, brings in a couple thousand dollars. Add to this the fact that we have pizza nights, I mean, we're constantly hustling for money there. That's what you do when you're a nonprofit. But we have to thank also so many musicians in this town, in this community, who donate their time to make a great time for us. We also receive grants every year. The grants will vary from maybe $10,000 to $15,000 a year to $20,000 to $25,000. The Meeting House recently got $30,000 in grants to give to the local fund entries and handicaps, just to build it. We're constantly working on grants and on fundraising to do our part, so thank you.
Other discussion on the article? Are we ready for the question? Okay, all in favor of approving a donation of $18,000, or approving $18,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association? Please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The amended motion carry. Article nine. Shall the voters approve a donation of $3,971 for the Franklin County Home Health Agency? I would entertain a motion. Chair recognizes Beth Harrigan, motion, seconded by Jean Archibault. Open for discussion. Are we ready for the question? Okay, all in favor, the voters approving a donation of $3,971 for the Franklin County Home Health Agency? Please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 10. Shall the voters approve a donation of $3,000 for the outdoor classroom? Previous year was 2,500. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Beth Harrigan. Is there a second? Second by John Gordon. Floor is open for discussion. Are we ready for the question? All right, all in favor of approving a donation of $3,000 for the outdoor classroom? Please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 11. Shall the voters approve a donation of $1,000 for the Franklin County Animal Rescue? Previous year was $1,000. I would entertain a motion. Your name, please. Eric Bushy made the motion. Is there a second? Julie Wilkott has the second. Floor is open for discussion. Are we ready for the question? Okay, all in favor of approving a donation of $1,000 for the Franklin County Animal Rescue? Please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 12. Shall the town make the following statement of support? We, the citizens of Fairfield, strongly support the completion of the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail. We urge the governor and legislature to jointly develop a plan that will ensure that the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail is completed by 2025. I would entertain a motion. Motion from Harry Goldhagen. Is there a second? Second by, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Amber Fisher? Thank you. Floor is open for discussion. Wait for the mic, please, John.
Hi, I'm John Gordon. I actually live kind of right on the edge of Sheldon. And last summer, they did the rail trail, starting right there by the historical exam, just below Sheldon Church. And took it on over, so you can go over the Borro brothers over across the bridge. And if you haven't been there, you need to go, because it is absolutely fabulous. They did a wonderful job. It is a beautiful walk. It's a beautiful bike ride. If my green kids stand there all the time, they ride, and I walk, I don't like my... But, oh, it's absolutely beautiful. Absolutely beautiful spot. So if you haven't been over there sometime this summer, when the weather gets a little better, come on over, because it's really great. It's a really beautiful walk. Having the rail trail completed would be really, really great.
Yeah, Wendy?
Actually, I have used it many times. It's great. Like John said, connect over by Borro brothers, right onto the Mississauga Valley Rail Trail. It is, it's beautiful, and it's wonderful, and I've used it many times.
Chair recognizes Jane Williams.
Just to let you know that I am actually the representative from Fairfield to the Mississauga Valley Rail Trail. And so I have been following the development of the trail for a number of years now. Because of different things that have helped up the development of the trail, we have not gotten any parts of Fairfield done yet. However, with this proposal that we're going to hold on, that shows that the governor and the legislature, that we would like to see the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail completed, is huge. First of all, our town has a large part of the trail that goes through Fairfield, approximately 10 miles or so, that go through the town of Fairfield. It would be such an amazing gift for the town. It would mean a place for people to go from our town to safely walk, to safely ride our bicycles. And I think of our kids, you know, you want to go for a bicycle ride in the town of Fairfield? If you go on the road, you're at the mercy of drivers who are maybe not paying enough attention. Whereas if you're on the rail trail, you're safe. And so I highly, highly recommend that the town of Fairfield supports this, and they are not asking for any money from us. They are, we are just going to tell them that we would like to see it done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Other discussion on the statement of support? Are we ready for the question? Okay, all in favor of making the following statement of support, that we, the citizens of Fairfield, strongly support the completion of the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail. We urge the governor and legislature to jointly develop a plan that will ensure the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail is completed by 2025. All in favor? Please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Statement of support, motion carries. Article 13. To transact any other non-binding business that may properly come before this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you all. So those of you who don't name John Gordon, I live over on sort of Sheldon Edge of town, right beside the Oregon and Sons Farm. For those of you who have been traveling through Sheldon Creek over the course of the winter, you may have noticed that green-sided building that's rising, is visiting right beside the Methodist Church. That is a non-meditative competition, but that is a combination food shelf and community building. It's 36 by 64, has two handicap accessible bathrooms, has a full commercial kitchen, just like the kitchen you see in here. We will be operating as a food shelf. We also will be providing free community dinners. Our first community dinner is Saturday, the 28th of March. I have 20 15-pound turkeys sitting in the freezer waiting to be cooked. The meals are absolutely free, they are open to anyone, regardless of age, residency, or anything, so please come and enjoy. And the building is a community building. It's fully, all public requirements, it's ADA compliant, all public access requirements. And the building is available for anybody who wants to have a community event, or a family event, a family gathering, the building is available. Say it's 36 by 64. We have tables and chairs to seat 100. And yesterday, I ordered dinnerware and silverware to serve 100. So hopefully, it'll be here by the time we're ready to serve our first meal on the 28th of March. So we're all welcome to come. For those of you who don't, the building was built, in good part, funded by the church. But the actual construction of the building, except for the pouring of the concrete and the putting on of the roof, the building was built entirely with volunteer labor.
Any other items for discussion on a non-binding? Julie Wilkott? Can somebody get the microphone? Thank you, Melissa.
I would like, if it's allowed, to have the principal of your school discuss the building addition or improve our school campus.
As long as two-thirds of the group is willing to suspend the rules for Sean to speak. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposition? Go for it, Sean.
Well, thank you. I didn't know I'd be speaking today, but I'm happy to. We are very fortunate to be adding on to our building as our population in the school grows. If you saw the report that I handed out, we have around 262 students now, which is great. And it is time for us to vacate the common school. It's not ADA compliant. It was a lot of time between buildings and dressing the children and getting them undressed. Just, it's not the best situation. It's also a very icy path to travel in the winter. So we started the construction project with the idea that we would be able to use capital reserve funds that are already in our endowment and available in our school district. So we would not have to add any money to the taxpayers, the money is already there. We were going to originally build the building just to the north of the property, and that was the plan until a few months ago, when I asked Mr. Baxter to put out some snow fencing so we could see what the profile of the building would look like. And we realized that we were pretty much going to be right on top of our neighbor, who has a house right there. And we didn't want to be a bad neighbor, because of course, that would negatively impact his home value. And so the architect, once we went out there and kind of recognized that, the architect redesigned for us on the back of the 1988 way of the building. So it's the southeastern corner, yeah, southeastern corner of the building. And it's kind of up on a hill, and we're going to be able to build an art room and a music room and an intervention classroom, which is a tiny classroom for small group instruction and literacy and mathematics. The rooms will have adequate storage for musical instruments and art supplies, which is a novel thing. We don't have adequate storage for anything, really. And we're also adding a tiny storage area right off here on the gym. So we're going to have tall doors, and we'll be able to move all of these dreaded tables out of the cafeteria and gym every single day after lunch. So when we have sporting events here, we're not sort of hanging out on the dinner tables. So when we have sporting events here, we're not sort of hanging out on the dinner tables. So that's going to be a really nice addition. The cost has gone up because this building has major mechanical issues that have been deferred for a very long time. And we are taking care of some of those. And the cost is up around $2 million now, but it's still being funded by capital reserve funds, so there is no tax dollar having to be spent to get this addition on the building. We just recently went to the select board this week and received their permission. We went to the development review board, or development zoning board, a couple weeks earlier, and got their permission. And construction is set to begin April 1st. And we have told the builders that we need to be in the new space on August 26th, which is the first day of school, so.
Hopefully, my NRPC person is going to be here. Any other non-binding business for today? Richard.
I would just like to take the time to introduce Jonathan DeLebriere. He is the new town administrator, and if okay, we'd like to give him an opportunity to introduce himself properly.
Do we have to suspend him? Good morning, everyone. I just want to introduce myself, Jonathan DeLebriere. I'm the new town administrator here in Fairfield, and I want to say what an honor it is to be a part of this community. I grew up in the Northeast Kingdom in Newport, Vermont. My parents and family still live up there. They all own their own businesses, and so I got brought up in a small business environment. I went to school at Champlain College in the University of Vermont, which kind of brought me into municipal government. I currently live in the city of Winuski with my fiancee. I've been on the fire department there for going on seven years. I teach the Vermont Fire Academy as well in my spare time, so I'm really happy to be in this community. I'm getting myself settled into my office, but please feel free, the door is always open. Any questions that you have, anything that you would like me to, problems that you would like me to help solve, I'm always open and always there to listen. So thank you very much for welcoming me in your community, and I look forward to meeting you all on an individual basis throughout the course of my term here. So thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Melissa Manson.
Hi. So as many of you know, we just were awarded a grant to redo our town plan, which is great because it expires in May. And the town plan will be on an accelerated schedule, so we expect to have it finished by the middle of summer. A town plan is an important document for projecting what we want the town to look like. We don't really foresee much in the way of changes. There's some new things that we have to include. We're updating maps to reflect the changes that just happened with our new zoning bylaws. We have to include areas of habitat blocks, places where large animals can migrate without having to go through developed areas. Luckily for us, that's pretty easy. Most of Fairfield's land is conserved, so we don't really have an awful lot of opportunity for development anyway. And the places we kind of want to see the development is where the land is available to develop. We'll be looking at some of the changes that have happened demographically. We've noted that our family sizes, our home sizes are getting smaller. House prices are going up, problematic, obviously, because it means people can't afford to live here anymore. Although our median income is much higher than the rest of the county, house prices are around $215,000 as an average, which is still more than most people can afford. So we'll be looking at including a little bit more affordable housing as we grow. Most people are working outside of Fairfield, we know that to be true, mostly in the city, St. Albans Town and St. Albans City, and the next greatest area is Burlington. So obviously, transportation corridors are important, but not something that we can affect as a very small town. We'll be looking at continuing to try and maintain the rural character of town while recognizing that farming is getting harder and harder, and people have to diversify to survive. So we're going to be supporting that effort. The biggest thing that we need to ask from you is participation in the planning process. And so we have a timeline for our plan update, and I'm just going to run through that for you. You'll find all of this information on our website. And it's not there yet, but I'll have Jonathan put that up for you. Thanks, Jonathan. So there's two meetings in March, March 9th at 5:30, that's Monday, March 30th also at 5:30. And then there will be three public events in the month of April, where we really encourage participation, because it's you who the town plan is for. In order to shape it the way you want it to go, you got to come and tell us what you want to see. And then there will be three planning commission meetings in May to discuss a draft plan, a public hearing in June, and then the town plan will be adopted in the summer. So we encourage participation. If you have questions, you can see me or any of the other planning commission members who are here today. And we have some of it on paper. Awesome.
I'll put it on the back table.
On the back table. So if you want to look, there's some updated maps and some of the information about demographic changes.
All right. Any other non-binding business? Yes, Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes, I'm Jill Mitchell, and I'd like to know why the road crew names are not put in the town report. We'd like to thank them for the good job that they do, but we don't even know their names anymore.
I'm sure that our thank you will be passed along. And do you want to share the names while everyone's here? Jean. They're testing you. You can do it.
Yeah, so Morse Jetty, James Monat, Johnny Horgan helps an awful lot in the winter, and Jimmy Parity. So if we could...
Jacob Campbell.
Oh, and Jacob Campbell, our newest member. Yeah, I didn't say I could remember all this stuff.
Yes. Just as a point of interest, Don Barry...
Thank you, Donna.
Just a new thing that is coming available, there are actually quite a few foster families, and we'd give it to you, because it's scary when I talk into a microphone. There's quite a few foster families that are in Fairfield, and that is fabulous. The, we have a new board that is trying to support foster families and trying to create programming. We are partnering with DCF, but we will be our own separate nonprofit group. So we are looking and reaching out to foster families, and respite families in all areas to reach out and let us know what the need is. I happen to have been voted vice president of this board. But so just, you know, if that is something that you are interested in, we are desperately looking for our people, and it's just a resource that we are trying to provide more for, because there are a lot of families that don't get any help or support that do fabulous work in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Board recognizes in the back of the room.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Chauvin. I'm on the rec committee, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we meet every Tuesday, the third Tuesday of every month, at 6:30, town offices. And everyone is welcome. You want to come and talk to us about ideas you have for the rec department to make programs and projects, then please come and talk to us, and we can get whatever it is rolling. Another thing is too, that I don't know if anybody knew, that project down there was a matched grant. So if we don't have any money to match, we can't do projects like that and anything else to fix recreational facilities in our town. So please come. We also post things on the Facebook page of the town, we're working on the rec department's Facebook page, but if for some reason we don't have a meeting, it might be because we just had one of our parties or something happening before that. But you can definitely contact me to see if we're having a program, send a message on Facebook just to make sure. But generally, it is the third Tuesday of every month at 6:30, town offices.
Any other non-binding topics? There's still time to support our PTO. There's plenty of good food over on that table. Oh, chair recognizes... Your name, please? Tina Churchill. Microphone's right there. Thanks, Melissa.
I need to tell you, what we're going to do is get more internet service. I live here, and I cannot get internet service in town of Fairfield. And when you've done the road, you cannot get internet service, because there's no more line of mail for us until the town requests.
Anything else? All right. Time to move on to the next article. And the next article is to adjourn. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposition to adjourn, please might indicate by saying no. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Oh, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.